Here in Prairie View, today we walked the campus, we drove around the city, and we saw what you guys already have here. We saw what those before myself, those of my age, I'm thirty-one, those that's on the university before them, who came before them and put their foundation here in Prairie View. So we see what you have done already, and we're looking forward to what the future holds.
So, in an effort to mitigate risk, we conducted a survey. In this survey, we surveyed residents of Petersburg, Virginia, as well as students of Virginia State. So if you could bring your attention to our statistical facts, you'll find that over seventy percent of people have never heard of the sport of cricket. But I use that to say that when we also began to explore deeper in our questions, we found that people became interested when they began to get exposed to the sport and hear a little bit more about it. So seeing as you guys have one of the largest cricket complexes in the United States, we see that as an area for potential growth and opportunity. Another statistic that I would like to point out that we got from our survey is over eighty-seven percent of the people thought that having vendors such as food and merchandise would attract them to the game. So what we see as a potential opportunity for local businesses to integrate themselves within the cricket complex and explore new business opportunities. Next slide, please. So again, looking at Prairie View as a whole, the demographics between race. So African-American population in Prairie View is very high, eighty percent. But we also see a huge area of potential growth within the Hispanic and Latino population. When you look at the surrounding areas, especially the Houston area, which we conducted a comparative analysis to, we see that that is a huge area of potential growth. Next slide, please. So these are some statistics that we got from the US Census. So when we started to align and do comparative analysis with Houston and other areas among the United States against Prairie View, what we began to see as Prairie View, when you look at it, they have a lot of opportunities of growth when you look at their level of education. They are right at the national average, and that's very uncommon when you look at other cities across the United States. We have citizens who are as highly educated as Prairie View. When you look at, however, there are certain things that could prevent growth, but we can get around it by doing mobile advertising. So when you look at the computer internet use, a lot of people have computers within the home, but they don't have internet. So with that said, we want to move to a mobile advertising plan to get the message out to the consumers. Next slide, please. So then moving on to another areas in which we figured were important to us. We look at the per capita income of the citizens, so we want to make sure that something is affordable for the residents. We want to make sure that they're able to attend these games at an affordable price. And then looking at the firms of the businesses within Prairie View. Prairie View has a very high percentage of minority-owned businesses, and we feel that it is very important to integrate them into the cricket complex and showcase the minority-owned businesses within the city. Next slide.
All right, so Prairie View Cricket Complex. The formal name is Kasum Prairie View Cricket Complex. So a little bit of background information, it's located off of US 290 in Leando Parkway. It's an interchange between Hinstead and Prairie View. So it's less than five miles from Prairie View A&amp;M. Currently has eight cricket fields, but when they finish developing, there will be a five thousand-seat stadium. It would include fifteen fields, and it's home to over fifty teams. This is the area of view, what it would look like. So this will be a major boost to the economy. There'll bring jobs, there'll be a hotel. Once again, someone will have to run the stadium. And then for the evacuation route, so we have to have crowd control. The quickest route would be to US 290, but there's also evacuation route from going through Prairie View A&amp;M.
Now, we want to talk about the marketing strategies that we have, the outbound marketing. We want to set displays in African-American communities and also hit the elementary schools. The youth is very important in our world that we live in. They're next, they're next up. They're the ones that will be the council members, they're the ones that will be your mayor, your president, the owners of the stores within your community. We want to also make sure we hit the malls, grocery stores, and just different sports events, like the football games, the basketball games, the soccer team who just won the SWAC, congrats to them at Prairie View A&amp;M. This outbound marketing strategy allows us to get in front of the African-American community and teach them and allow them to see what cricket has to offer. And not just them, but also the community. Like my colleague said, it's going to bring a lot of revenue to your minority stores and shops that have guests coming in, wanting, driving on the road, seeing different stores, wanting to stop by. It's going to boost your economic and revenue and just overall when it comes to enhancing the city of Prairie View. We want to put billboards up on Highway 290 and inform pass buyers. And as you saw when we came off the plane, we flew in the hobby Sunday night, if I'm not mistaken. And on the way to Prairie View, we saw how those billboards will be able to be seen, and people will have the interest and just a curiosity to want to see and want to know what's going on, what does this cricket complex have to offer? And the cricket complex in Prairie View. So, once they see what has to offer, they're also going to stop by the store, stop by Prairie View A&amp;M. Honestly, I was talking to my colleague Tim today. I was walking campus, and if I wasn't knowing about Prairie View, I probably would have given a thought and said, going to Virginia State or Norfolk State. But, um, that's just walking, just not knowing. People, they just, they don't know. People don't know. I did not know from someone who played college football, I didn't know about Prairie View until I started playing football at Norfolk State and so on. Merchandising. We also want to, another way of advertising is merchandising. As you see on the right, just an example, we want to brand Prairie View Cricket Complex or just Prairie View A&amp;M Cricket or City of Prairie View Cricket. And just have a photo on a tee-shirt. And also want to make sure we incorporate the colors of your city. You always want to make sure you have your branding yourself and branding your business, branding your city as well. Continue with that. We want to make sure we try and get small cricket bats. Signature cricket balls called SGs. It's a small card ball that they use to play the game. Like I said, apparel, tee-shirts, hoodies, sweatshirts. And also, who knows, maybe it becomes a sport at Prairie View A&amp;M. And then now you have a whole nother type of revenue income coming in. Vendors want to try and get food trucks. Those who have their own catering services, minority services already, you guys can allow yourselves to get a food truck set up at the cricket games, and now you're looking at more ways to provide and increase income within your shops and your stores. Our creative idea is certain things that we have that's just free, like free tee-shirt at the football games, the basketball games, the baseball games, at the track tournaments. And just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to reach out to every organization, every race, everyone who lives within the city, so they have the opportunity to see what the cricket complex has to offer.
Yeah, so to kind of expound on what my colleague was saying, we came up with about four different implementation plans that we would like to implement in the promotion of this cricket complex. The first being a national community outreach program. Especially when we're able to visit, this message was reinforced. Prairie View has a very strong community. So what we want to do is on all levels, whether that be elementary, middle, high school, and collegiate, and even professional, we want to integrate cricket play. So cricket players would come across to play at this complex, and we want them to engage with the youth. So come to that elementary school, come to that middle school, and engage with the community. Cricket is a very communal game when you look at it being played around the world. And we feel like Prairie View exhibits that exact same thing when you look at it on a global aspect. So that's the first thing that we would like to do. Another thing we would like to do is a targeted social media campaign. So reach out to those different age groups and market differently towards those different age groups. So we're going to have a couple of different campaigns. One's from the age groups of twelve to seventeen, one for eighteen to thirty-two, and another one for thirty-two and fifty-four. And each campaign will be a little bit different and kind of appeal to the interest of each of those demographic. The other two are just kind of minute things that we want to reinforce and do in a specific way, i.e. Facebook advertisement. What we kind of saw was a lot of people use Facebook in this area, so we feel like Facebook advertisement would be very useful. Also, we want to utilize YouTube and non-skippable ads. Again, our research showed that when people are exposed to the sport, they are, they're prone to, you know, want to go and look at it and see it and enjoy and even Google it. So what we want to do is implement non-skippable ads so they're almost forced to look and accept the sport. Next slide, please.
And right here is a quote that we have from Mr. Tanner Reer, Ahmad. He is basically the father of the complex. Prairie View Cricket Complex is a community project started by a group of cricket enthusiasts in Houston, Texas, right here in Texas. This is an eighty-six acre project situated less than five miles away from Prairie View A&amp;M. So once again, that revenue is going to come up. As, for example, the Super Bowl. Wherever the Super Bowl is being held, revenue is going to shoot, it's going to shoot up, it's going to fly up. Continuing, the Kasum Prairie View Cricket Association plans to bring fifty-plus cricket teams into one place. So that hotel that we got building, not only is it going to bring jobs for the likes of those who may not have a job and get an opportunity to provide for their family, but it's also going to bring in, once again, the revenue. We strongly believe that cricket can play a major role in bringing the community together. Like my colleague said, going to the elementary schools, teaching them cricket. It's just like soccer. Everyone frowned upon soccer or, who wants to play this sport? What African-American want to play this sport? No US citizen wants to play this sport. And now, it's a sport that just skyrocketed and a lot of youth and even people of my age, mid-year gentlemen, have an interest in playing soccer now. Also, just taking back and off of that, make sure we want to reach the schools, the elementary schools, high schools, colleges around, not just Prairie View. You can go to Houston, you can go to Texas Southern, and educate them on something that they may not know. And they may not know because they may not have been informed about it. We plan to make a place where families, children, and communities can come together and enjoy a beautiful game of cricket. And those are words from Mr. Tanner Reer. And we have a YouTube video that I'm about to play for you guys just so you can see a slight visual of what's going on. And the video is more, it's all bloopers. Little mistakes that guys have done during the game, and they have cost them a point or two or even a game.
And in this video, you'll kind of see some types of the advertisements that we'll use. We found that comedy is one of the quickest ways to get people to begin to research cricket and the game.
It's actually the second most popular sport in the world, and it's kicking off fast. They're actually, they proposed in April a fifteen thousand-seat stadium in Allen, Texas. It's called Allen Cricket Stadium. So people are really jumping on it. It's in Dallas. And it's five hundred million dollars, it's a five hundred million dollar stadium. And they're claiming to be the first of eight, but you all have Prairie View Cricket Stadium, so we really need to get ahead of this.
Definitely, because when you compare it, Prairie View is a lot larger than others.
Well, they, yeah, they haven't even started building, so.
Yeah, but again, while we figure out the video, we feel like this is a great opportunity to brand the city of Prairie View. So as you can see, even with our tee-shirts, it says Prairie View Cricket. That's very important because just like you said, we want to get that exposure into the city because while this is not the only thing that the city does, we want to get people to start getting interest and start Googling Prairie View, start Googling about the university, some of the different communities that you guys have, it's such a strong minority base, and just bring people down here.
We also created a website. It's actually an interactive website, but since there's no internet, we just have a screenshot of it. It's a two-part screenshot.
The other thing they had to do for class was redesign the city of Prairie View's website. This is just their idea of what they think it should look like, and they're presenting this to you really quick.
Okay, so we just recreated the home screen. I tried to keep the same color scheme that you all have, the purple and gold. Tried to make it a little more user-friendly. I created, added the search box, so if you can't find what you're looking for, you can just type it in and it'll come up. Also, I changed the header tabs. That way, anyone searching for Prairie View when it comes up, they can click on the tab, they can learn about cricket, they can learn about the school. They can also learn of tourism attractions. Yeah, so it was a two-part. Just added some interactive methods, just any upcoming events, any news that you all have going on in the city. Clickable tabs and links to get to your social media accounts. I kept the online payments, the meeting agendas, and documents. And then also, it was pictures. I took pictures off of the website for the city, and I just uploaded them. So it actually changes pictures, and it was pictures of the community and things that you all had going on.
Okay, guys, so I just want to thank you guys all for your attention. I want to thank you for your time on behalf of Virginia State University. I want to thank the citizens of Prairie View, Mayor Allen, and the council for happiness.
All of the veterans, please come forward. Thank you all again, we appreciate it. Will all the veterans, please, come forward?
Might take me a while to get there.
I know, and at almost ninety-seven, you're still getting around better than most of us.
I'll take that. That'd work well for me.
We've got a letter from US Congressman Michael McCall, and I'd like to read that to all of those of us who serve. Dear veterans and the city of Prairie View, I'm honored to join with you this Veterans Day to recognize the brave men and women who have voted their time to serve the service to our great nation. Each year Veterans Day offers us the opportunity to honor all of those who have served this country in war or peace. Today, we thank these heroes for their sacrifices. The theme for this year's Veterans Day is, quote-unquote, "service." Our men and women in uniform know more than anyone else that we're only able to live in freedom because of dangers they endure. My father served as a bombardier on a B-17 whose squadron, among many others, participated in the D-Day air campaign. He was just one of the tens of thousands of young American patriots who answered the call to serve. It was my father and his love of service to our great nation that has always inspired me to do the same. Today, I'm continuously inspired by the men and women who have served or are serving in the military of the United States of America. They carry our values of humility, honor, duty, and loyalty with them in their everyday life. Veterans take the lessons learned and experiences gained from active duty and continue their service to our nation by strengthening our communities. For many, these patriots are members of our family, friends, and neighbors. Today, we take a pause to remember their extraordinary sacrifice. I encourage you to join with me this Veterans Day in thanking all of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice of service to our country and those who risked their lives for our freedoms. I want to personally thank World War II veteran Luther Francis, who at almost ninety-seven, for his service to our country. God bless each of you and God bless those who have served and are still serving the military of the United States of America. Sincerely, Michael T. McCall, member of Congress.
Use this a little bit?
Yeah.
That right knee is beating me like a drum. I got it. Thank you much.
We're now opening a public hearing. And as the city's superintendent officer, one of the things I want to share to educate the public on, these are required meetings by law once someone submits particular applications. And while it may seem like they're repetitive, the planning zoning has to have one, and then the city council has to have one. And again, they're both required by law, so it's not bringing the same thing back to you again and again. This one has never happened. So just again, to educate you on the process that you have to follow, again, by law. The applicant presentation, I think, the Freedom Development Group is first step?
I just went by the, uh...
Are you ready? No, no, you go right ahead, Mr. McHenry, sure. That's fine, yeah, because we want to go take in place, so that's good.
All right. Good evening, city council, community members, and visitors as well too. My name is Ali McHenry. My partner is not here with me, her name is Demetia DeFlora. She's traveling internationally. I am a class of nineteen ninety-five graduate of Prairie View A&amp;M, College of Electrical Engineering. I currently work in Houston for the Houston Police Department. I'm also a hostage negotiator for the Houston Police Department as well. And I want to present our project, this project 1248. It's a mixed-use housing project. And I wanted to go into some details, and I want to address some of the issues and concerns that we've heard from the community and some of our other community meetings that we've had. But I do want to say this before starting, just in reference to our last presentation. I know there's a lot of resistance to change in the community, especially along Richard Road, which is our proposed development. But I submit to you that we're already here. That eighty-plus acre complex has already changed the dynamics of that corridor. I think the question is less about change, in my opinion, and more about how we're going to manage that change and take advantage of what's already happening here within the city. I briefly just, Demetia, she's also a part of the College of Engineering as well too, and I hope that you will meet her one day. She's a management consultant with a consultant with a small firm called Athenean Consulting Group, which she has been working in that field since she's graduated from Prairie View, so she has about twenty-five years of experience. And she also sits on the Board of Trustees for the PBMU Foundation. Now, the first question you got to ask, who we asked ourselves is, why Prairie View? And it's a very simple answer for us, is we love Prairie View. We made big transitions while we were here, and we earned our degrees here. And there are a lot of graduates and alumni who've gone out to do some great things in the community. And us, like other alumni, we want to come back and make a difference in the community that we essentially grew up in as well too. So that's why we chose Prairie View. I do want to make a note here to the public and for the city council as well too. I do believe, based on our records, our application has expired. Because we started and purchased our land in November of 2017, we submitted our application in May of 2018, and we didn't even have a first community meeting for over a year. And this is about six months after that. So however you vote and however you consider our project, I would just ask that you take into account Article 14100 of the zoning ordinance, Section 2.03.13 for expired applications. Now, another reason that we're really passionate about our project and we're really in support of any other developments in the city, I'll give you an example here, and it's no knock on Texas A&amp;M, the system at all. But even the fifty-acre tract that they have on the north side of the street that's just coming off of Prairie View on University Drive. You look at number one, it's A&amp;M system that owns that tract. And the land value, just the raw land value in number two, you see is over a million dollars. But if you see in number three, how much will Prairie View get off of that?
Zero.
Absolutely nothing, right? If you look at the very bottom of number four, that's what the city, that's the taxes that would have been available just to the raw land before it got developed, which would not, which would not be there. And to me, that is a train that's happening here in Prairie View. It is a economic train that's moving. Again, the question is, are we, as a own property, live in Prairie View, city council officials, how are you going to position yourself to take advantage of that? And that's not the only property that they own along University Drive as well too. So what we want to do is not about student housing. I want to emphasize that, it's about housing in general. We want to create a modern product that's clean. And I want to emphasize the word "safe" as well too, because we listened to some concerns for the community. We want to make our community a gated community. We want to have it controlled access twenty-four hours, twenty-four seven, having level three security at the gate. And that just means a person who's not necessarily a peace officer, but they do have a firearm, and they are able to be an early warning system to prevent people from coming onto that property that do not belong on that property. We want to offer with something that we do in Harris County is called a courtesy officer, which is essentially we extend an apartment complex to a local police officer in the city of Prairie View, and they receive complimentary rent for being, it's called a courtesy officer at our apartment complex, which means they live there, they have a unit there. And in exchange for no rent, we just ask them to respond to when they're off duty, their small incidents of loud noise or disturbances, to address those smaller issues before they become larger issues. Another thing here too, and I put this in a particular... Uh another thing here too, and I put this in a particular order, it's, and, and no knock on undergraduates here, so don't, don't beat me up. But we have to listen to what the community is saying as well too. And we keep hearing the community want housing that's more than just for students. I'm passionate about students because I did my undergrad here. But there are other needs as well too, we have our graduate students, we have doctoral candidates. So primarily, our design is going to be for people that live in this community first, so we're trying to create a higher-end product. Then next would be university faculty and staff, whether it's permanent or whether they're visiting professors, and then on down the line as you see here. Now, our particular property is the one that you see, uh let me go back, sorry, with the blue dot. That is two four four two seven Richards Road, okay? And it is directly in the seven, uh the, the red dots that you see, those are our neighbors that are within two hundred feet, according to uh Waller County tax records, uh which we looked up. And I listed the name of the owners. And so we have had community meetings before, everybody within two hundred feet has been invited. And we documented what the issues are, and I want to walk through each of about ten issues with some of the proposed solutions. Because I do believe when people in your community have issues, can you take rest their issue? And that's what we want to do. I also want to point out too, that the property directly across the street, I hope you can see the red dot. This area already over here, it's already zoned as MU, which is mixed-use. So it can already be multifamily apartments, it can be commercial, certain types of commercial property as well too. So all of the property right here at number three and headed down south this way is already mixed-use, already. And on this side here, we're considered R-one, which is single-family. And I'm presenting today to ask for, to uh exercise uh our right to request to be rezoned from R-one to mixed-use as well. So here's some of the concerns that uh that we've uh heard in our, in our meetings. The first one is the traffic, the fast traffic that is coming down. And I understand a perception that more people that come down that road is going to increase more traffic and potentially more speeders that come down that road. I contend that that issue is already on our hands. Because of the cricket field, because of the volume and the size, it might not be up and running, but it's already coming. So that solution has more to do with the government and not necessarily the projects that are coming into play. I do know, um and the mayor may correct me later on, but to my knowledge, there is a proposed uh upgrade on Richards from Wyatt's Chapel all the way down past New two ninety to old two ninety to widen that up to four lanes, two each way, one center lane and a, and a, and a bike lane as well too. That has not yet been approved by the Houston Galveston Area Council, but it is on their list for their short-term project. Just wanted to give you that information if you weren't aware. Uh the next concern we heard was just the flat-out increased uh traffic. So that's addressed somewhat uh from the lanes, uh but in terms of slowing traffic down, that is.